Welcome everyone to this. Welcome everyone to this Town of Orno Planning Board meeting. It's Wednesday, April 20th, 2022. First item on our agenda is a roll call. In person, we have Lisa Buck, we have Mike Costello, myself, Phil Rock, and online, we have Ashley. I'm sorry, Ashley, I haven't worked with you long enough to remember you. Ashley Case, excuse me. And we also have Krista Switzer. And anybody else? No? Maybe we'll have people join.
Dave Thompson.
And Dave Thompson is with us online.
Looks like he just joined, so.
So should be part of that.
Very good. So next up, it's acceptance of the agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved. A second.
Any discussion?
Just real quick, Belle wanted me to give a reminder for everyone to speak loudly and directly into the owl. So that everyone remotely can hear.
Anybody have any issues with the agenda? All right, Justin, please.
Am I including Ashley in the votes?
Don't need to, but it's there's.
3400, but.
Yeah.
All right. For the approval of the agenda, Ashley Case.
Approved.
Michael Costello.
Approved.
Lisa Buck.
Approved.
Phil Rock.
Approved.
Krista Switzer.
Approved.
Dave Thompson, can you hear us?
Right here.
Do you approve the agenda, Dave?
Yes, he does.
Okay, thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
That's six four, none opposed.
Thank you. Next up, approval of the minutes from March 16th, 2022. Can I get a motion, please?
I approve the minutes.
Very good, thank you. Show me a second.
I'll second.
Any edits? Comments?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you, Krista. What do you have?
Okay. On page three, the second paragraph from the bottom, that paragraph starts the WBRC. And then it says rep. I think that should say representative, since this is a formal document.
Pull up.
And, and you can search for the other reps in the document and change them too. And then in the second line, some gremlin crept in and the word TERF is spelled T E R F.
Oh, sorry about that. I am, yeah, aware. That is not the TERF I meant.
Okay, that's it.
If you keep going on that same sentence, which creates and farming area for the stormwater.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any other comments? Thank you, Krista. Very good, we have a motion to second and some comments.
For the approval of the, I'm sorry, of the March Planning Board minutes, Ashley Case.
Abstained.
Right. Michael Costello.
Approved.
Lisa Buck.
Approved.
Phil Rock.
Approved.
Krista Switzer.
Approved.
Dave Thompson.
Approved.
That's five four, we want him staying in.
Thank you. Next up, we have new business this evening. We have two public hearings. First one is a minor site plan application by Delaney Brownlee, located at 56 Main Street, tax map 27-2, lot 140 in the Village Commercial District. The application is for a food truck to operate in the existing parking area on the lot. Is anyone, somebody on that here? Could you step up to that mic? Please, I would stop, I'll put you, propose.
Hi, everybody. My name is Matthew Cunia and I, I'm here with Delaney Brownlee. We have another person, he might be in the Zoom, Gavin Russell as well. Looking to start a food truck right over, right next door at 56 Main Street and the old Canadian National Bank lot. Me and Delaney and Gavin came up with the idea about a year ago, just to have a food truck. We're playing on serving burgers, fries, kind of fair food. Looking to add hot dogs and chicken in the future. And we're also talking about doing milkshakes, so kind of like a, you know, burgers, fries, shakes, that kind of thing. Right next door. And again, we have, we've purchased the food truck, went to get it wrapped and, you know, park it right over next door here with some tables for our customers to sit at and eat. And, I mean, that's kind of the basis of what we're looking at.
Thank you. Kyle, you also provided a summary for the planning board as well. Do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, so I'll go over a few things that we look at in the ordinance in regards to food trucks. So food trucks fall under our mobile food vendor designation, which is split into two categories. The reason this one is coming before the planning board is the proposal to operate on a more regular, frequent basis. So there's that dividing line of if a food truck is operating more than three days, really. You know, we ask them to come to the planning board and go through the abbreviated site plan process, similar to what we do with some businesses. And it's primarily to look at, you know, where the truck is situated on a property. Usually it's in a parking lot, so we're looking at traffic and access on the property. In this case, the, the bank is not currently in use. So the parking lot is not being utilized by an existing use on the property. So it's not quite as big of a concern. The proposed location that the applicant has proposed on their plan serve in those front parking spaces on the, the front property line side. I believe the, you know, look at the, the parking area. You know, any day now, there are some people parking in there. Like the, the property owner has an agreement with some neighboring businesses and folks to use the, the parking lot. So we want to make sure that the truck is not blocking any access points or access in the kind of internal parking area. Where it's proposed, it doesn't seem to be doing that. In addition, there's no minimum parking requirement in the Village Commercial for businesses. So there isn't really a concern that there might be elsewhere where, you know, the planning board has required a certain amount of off-street parking for a use on a site. And then a food truck comes in and takes away a certain number of parking spaces. That's not really a concern here. As I just mentioned, they're proposing to have some kind of picnic tables and the trash can located outside of the truck. We talked about it through the application that those will be removed from the parking area when the truck's not in operation and located inside the bank. So meeting the, the standards of the ordinance where you're not leaving anything stored outside of the food truck when it's not in operation. The hours of operation provided meet the standards of the ordinance. The applicant didn't propose any signage as part of their application. Ordinance does allow for a sandwich board sign for food trucks. So in the report, staff did make a recommendation that it just be made a condition of approval. That if they come forward in the future and wish to have a sign, that that's something they could obtain just via a permit through the code officer. So it wouldn't have to come back to the planning board, so long as it met those dimensional requirements in the, in the land use ordinance. Other than that, they provided the agreement with the property owner that they are allowed to use the property for the use. I think that's pretty much it. So. Any answer, any questions?
Yeah, before we open it up to public hearing, any questions from the board or the applicant? Came up with just a couple. Or maybe just one. So you mentioned waste is going in the, the, the bank building, but there'll be some regular pickup. Is that your responsibility?
Yes.
All this stuff, because you said it's what, a 60 gallon?
Yes.
Have to go inside and periodically you have somebody, a waste hauler coming to grab it.
Yep, correct.
Good answer. Oh. Kyle, I did want to procedurally, I did note that you mentioned to simplify this, we need to discuss a waiver?
Yes, yeah, I should have mentioned that part. So like with the home businesses, a number of the the application materials that would normally be required through site plan, they have to deal with new construction or disturbance on the site, you know, stormwater erosion control, those sorts of things. Those aren't usually required for, you know, these types of applications where they're not making any actual impact on the, the ground or constructing any new buildings. So there should be a, a motion from the, from the board to waive those requirements as they're not really applicable to this project. And I think that, I think it's okay to do that in one motion instead of waiving each individually.
That's a good idea. So I'm just curious. Sorry, this is the first one of these, the mobile food vendor two. So if this is fairly typical, was that, and we should consider changing this for all applicants or maybe just on occasion, somebody will have a site there, or food truck that might affect stormwater or any other criteria?
I mean, I'd say it's similar to the, the home business.
Yeah.
Coming to the, they're coming to the planning board for, it's not so much the impact on the ground, but for, you know, whether it's noise or the sort of use of the site and the kind of traffic it might generate in certain areas, certain zones where other commercial activity might not be as present.
With the list you have here, I can't see many food trucks ever impacting.
Right.
You know, that you need topography, soil information, stormwater management. The only thing that might be applicable, parking and traffic circulation. I mean, we've listened to you, that you're not going to block traffic, it's going to circulate around.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, something like that, so they potentially come up and.
Not that we get these that often, but it just seems like a food truck. I'm not sure that we would even have to waive it because we're never.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure how that would work. There would have to be an amendment to the site plan ordinance. I don't know if bigger picture for kind of all projects that fall into this realm, something could be looked at. But yeah, that's something we could look into.
From the flag, yeah. Yeah, that's really all I had. So you understood that the signage requirement?
Yeah.
It's funny that you're saying that now, but you know, if you want to sign, we'll just make that, I don't know, when we get to that stage. Condition of approval, so that you have options.
That's.
No, I have just a general question.
Yeah.
Kyle, it doesn't necessarily apply to your application, but food trucks are going to be more common. Does it, food truck, because his isn't going to be moving. Doesn't have to be strictly legal, does that be registered?
Yeah, so they have.
So you can't turn it in and just drop it off, right?
No, it has to be. Yeah, I mean, it can be, it doesn't have to be a, a food truck. A mobile food vendor could be a cart or a trailer, but it would need to be told by something. The idea is that it's mobile.
It could.
Right. Right, it's not a permanent structure. It's not designed to be dropped off and just left there. If a trailer was, you know, to be used, you would imagine that the mobile portion of it would be alongside it.
One more point, I did notice the site plan application that was submitted, they say rezoning application. I just want to make sure there's no, no compounding confusion on that. This is not a rezoning application.
Right, right.
I mean, you have it right in the public hearing, but I just want to make sure that's clear for the applicant, that that's not what we're doing this evening.
Yeah, so that's. Yeah, that wasn't a town generated.
Right.
So, yeah.
So just as long as there's no confusion, what we're doing.
Right, it's only, it's only an application for a site. The only, after the planning board process, like any other restaurant or serving food, that then will have to go through the official license process through the council. And that will be a yearly license to renew. But the planning board, site plan review is a one time.
Right, yeah, but rezoning, that's a big deal. Watson. Geez, that's all I have. So I'm gonna, there's no other questions from the board? All right. Open that up for a public hearing. Belle, are there lines of people waiting?
No one.
No, there's not.
Mitch is there, so.
All right, I'm gonna leave it open for a couple minutes. So hours of operation, we're gonna kill some time. Hours of operation, I see you're closed for a couple days and then.
Yeah, so we're gonna be closed on Monday and Tuesday. And then Friday, Saturday, it's till 10:00, as long as it allows. Just because, you know, it's the weekend, college kids are gonna be in the area come September, so. Yeah, and the other hours per standard, I think they're about night. Wednesday through, Wednesday, Thursday. Yeah, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Wednesday, Thursday, Sunday, sorry.
Kind of lighting do you have on a food truck? Just typical, but just enough so your patrons can see what's going on?
Yeah, there's just a standard kind of plain light above the, the food truck. Just to look at. And I think it's there so they can see menus and stuff like that.
Yeah.
So that's what we have for lights.
Are gonna have an electronic menu board? Is that what I saw, like TV screen or something?
Yeah, we're looking at kind of just a relatively small TV screen.
Yeah.
That, you know, hopefully won't be too bright, but just enough to kind of update menus as you see, whereas if we had a signage, we'd have to constantly update that. We're looking to do like specials of the month. It's just something, just a very small TV screen to put there, as well as we'll have to take out menus to pass out.
When would you expect to start the maintenance stuff?
Um, yeah, so we, we're in the process of getting a state license, so we've submitted our application. We're waiting to hear back from them. And then we'd also have to do the, the local license, actual license here. So, I mean, we're aiming at May 1st, but it's probably later into the summer, waiting on licenses.
Belle, anybody?
Nobody.
All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Last call for questions from the board. Very good. Kyle, I believe you have some findings of fact, proposed findings of fact?
I don't have that, do you want to do the motion for the?
Yes, yeah, thank you, first. We were gonna need a motion for the waivers that Kyle described. He has them listed for whoever's going to make the motion. They're listed quite nicely in the review that Kyle provided. So, do I have a motion, please?
I move that we waive all submission requirements that are relevant only to new construction product projects, including surveys, topographical maps, soil information, stormwater management, erosion control plans, parking and traffic circulation plans, utility plans, and landscaping plans for this particular site.
Very good, thank you, Lisa. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dave. Further discussion?
For the approval of the waivers, Ashley Case.
Approved.
Michael Costello.
Approved.
Lisa Buck.
Approved.
Phil Rock.
Approved.
Krista Switzer.
Approved.
Dave Thompson.
Approved.
That's six four, none opposed.
And. All right, these are proposed findings of fact for Delaney Brownlee for the site plan review dated April 20th, 2022, pursuant to Article Six, Section 18-177 of the Orno Planning Ordinances. The Orno Planning Board has considered the application of Delaney Brownlee for minor site plan for the operation of a mobile, excuse me, mobile food vendor two food truck located at 56 Main Street, tax map 27-2, lot 140 in the Village Commercial District. Based on all evidence presented by the applicant, reviewing agencies, town departments, and the public found the following. I'm gonna go through all, all of these and then we're gonna yay or nay at the, at the end, please. Number one, requirements of the district that the proposed use is allowable in the Village Commercial District and meets all applicable dimensional requirements. Number two, compliance with town ordinances and codes. That the proposed use meets the provisions of applicable regulations of the town, including all pertinent sections of Chapter 18 Land Use Ordinance. Three, utilization of the site that the use is proposed to take place on an existing parking area and is therefore within the natural capabilities of the site and is located in a suitable area of the site. Four, traffic and pedestrian access that the existing structure on the site is not in use and is not generating any traffic and that the proposed food truck will be accessed via existing roads with adequate capacity to accommodate the proposed traffic generation from the food truck. And that the location of the food truck within the parking area will not impact vehicular or pedestrian access on the site. Five, storage of materials, that there will be no exposed storage of materials. Six, stormwater management, that no changes to stormwater management are expected as a result of the project. Seven, erosion control, that no new construction will take place and erosion control measures will not be needed. Eight, water supply and sewage disposal, that there is no proposed change in water or sewer capacity needed. Nine, utilities, that no change in utilities on the site is required. Ten, natural features, that no change in natural features on the site will occur. Eleven, groundwater and surface water quality protection, that the proposed project does not adversely impact either the quality or quantity of groundwater available to abiding properties or to public water supply systems. Twelve, hazardous special radioactive materials, that the use of the site does not involve the handling, storage, or use of hazardous, special, or radioactive materials. Thirteen, shoreline relationship, that the site is not within the shoreline zone. Fourteen, solid waste management, that the proposed use provides for adequate disposal of solid waste. Fifteen, historic and archaeological resources, that the project area is not known to contain historic or archaeological resources. Sixteen, financial capacity, that the applicant has the financial capacity to carry out the use. And lastly, seventeen, noise and lighting, that the facility will operate within the noise and lighting standards in town ordinances. Are there any issues or concerns with any of those items? I'm just writing to the record. All right, seeing none, I think I'm ready for a motion.
We, do I have a signage question right now?
That'll be a condition. So if we go right off Kyle's review. Yeah, so if we.
We're two conditions.
Yeah, two conditions, one, one and two last applicant's review.
And should those get ready to the motion?
Yeah, please.
Go for it, okay. I propose that we. Yeah. I have it.
We'll approve it through that.
Yeah, 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 okay. I propose that we approve the site plan review of Delaney and Brownlee for a minor site plan for the operation of a mobile food truck vendor two located at 56th Street, tax map 27-2, lot 140 in the Village Commercial District. With the following two. Should the property owner give notice that the applicant no longer has the right to use the property to operate food truck? The applicant, the applicant shall cease operation. Also, if the property is sold, the applicant shall cease operation unless an agreement with the new property owner. And that the applicant is allowed to have one sandwich board sign in relation to the food truck, so long as it meets all relevant requirements of the sign ordinance in Section 18-140 of the Land Use Ordinance.
Awesome, thank you, Lisa. I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Krista. Any further discussions? Jessica, please.
For the approval of the site plan application, Ashley Case.
Approved.
Michael Costello.
Approved.
Lisa Buck.
Approved.
Phil Rock.
Approved.
Krista Switzer.
Approved.
Dave Thompson.
Approved.
That's six for approval with none opposed.
Congratulations. Very nice to see some people going in that walk. Next up, we have another public hearing. This is a proposed land use ordinance amendment to create a definition for fraternity sorority houses slash sorority houses, which would allow fraternity and sorority houses to be used by groups taking part in university-sponsored events when the university is not in session. And Kyle, I believe you prepared a nice summary for us again, if you could.
Yeah. So I think the summary is actually longer than the ordinance. Yeah, this is something that we staff had, had worked on with, with folks from the university and then brought to council committee for discussion. As I kind of tried to explain in the, the report, usually when we have a, a land use that's zoned as a, a use that's allowed in certain zoning districts, there's a, there's an accompanying definition. So you look at the, the table of uses and you see where it's allowed. And then if you need, you know, more clearly be able to tell what exactly that use entails, you can go to the definition section, you know, you can see exactly what it is. We have a, a use for fraternity and sorority houses. And it's zoned as an allowable use in the university district. But there's no, there's no definition for it in our ordinance. Now, there's been a, a, a practice in the past where some of the fraternity and sorority houses wish to be used by certain groups, not necessarily related to the fraternity or sorority, but they're in the area for some event through the university. And, you know, the question sort of came up that, okay, this is something that ideally we would continue to allow. It's good for a number of reasons. One, you know, these are, these are groups, you know, taking part in some sort of university-sponsored event. It puts someone in the building to kind of continue maintenance and operation of the building through periods when the fraternities and sororities aren't using them. So it makes maintenance of the buildings a little better. So all around, this was something that I think that the town was supportive of. But the, the potential issue is that if you, if you don't have a definition for it and you just take the, the average dictionary definition of what a fraternity or sorority house is and you assume that it's to be used by the fraternity or sorority, you know, it brings up the question of, okay, well, when this different group of people is using it, what is it classified as? And it started to raise questions of whether is this, you know, should this be viewed as a different type of lodging facility? Does that raise questions about what sort of codes they now have to meet? Is it a, you know, I think through the fire department, they were struggling to under their, their code that they're supposed to follow. So what sorts of requirements that, you know, they should be abiding by? So by defining it this way to include that kind of provision to, to allow this type of activity under that definition, it, it makes it a lot cleaner for staff to be able to continue allowing that use to take place. But that's really the, that's really the goal, is to really continue this practice that's been ongoing as an allowable activity going forward.
Very good. So, yeah, our job this evening, again, when we review ordinances, is have a public hearing, provide a recommendation and then the council gets that, their public hearing.
Correct.
Well, very good. So before I open it up to public hearing, any questions from the board?
Okay. Well, I, I have one question about this or suggestion. And, you know, on the whole, I think it's a good idea. It's, I'm, I'm down in the weeds. And third line from the bottom of this thing, it says, university-sponsored events or programs so long as the group serves a common interest. And, you know, common interest, okay, what's the common interest? And, you know, common interest, okay, what's the common interest? I can think of lots of good common interests. But when you have a bunch of young people, the common interest might be to party, drink lots of beer, smoke pot, whatever. And so I think that we could maybe say after common interest, approved by the university. So that the university gets to say which what's the common interest?
Yeah, I I hear your saying. I think that's what we were trying to say when you go kind of a line ahead of that or before that, when it says groups of people taking part in university-sponsored events. The idea was that it would be something sanctioned by the university. It's not not just any group of people. It's something that the the university would basically have to sign off on, saying this group is coming here for a specific purpose. Do you do you still, do you think that's not clear enough or or?
I'm wondering, just to add to that, because I had circled, you know, the a leases side. So I was just thinking that every group that would come through there, and I just wasn't sure on the terminology, but I'm wondering if with that suggestion and Krista's concern, whether, you know, in that lease, it could be very clear or agreement. I'm not sure. Was legally, if that's what it's called, at any time, any group goes into the house. But if it, as long as it's specified, who's gonna be in there and maybe what the conditions are that would address Krista's concern perhaps? So you have university-sponsored events, and Krista offered text. I'm just wondering whether it could, the same thought could be captured in.
Right.
Krista, what do you what do you think on on that? Or would you still like to see approved by the university? You think the lease would take care of it?
Yeah, I think we say if we say approved by the university, that takes care of it.
No, but would would the lease take care of it? The the current mention of the lease and university-sponsored?
Okay, you want to, I'm sorry, where where where?
No, I just wanted to clarify, because when I read that, you 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 wanted to stress that the common interest be approved by the university. And I was just wondering, in the next few words, the comma, a leases sign. So in that lease agreement, you could be fairly specific on on what's allowed or, you know, what tenants or temporary groups are gonna be allowed to do, perhaps? Just throw an idea though.
I I guess that I'm trying to understand, are we concerned about liability, like who's liable, or are we concerned about what the activities are or both?
Did you hear that, Krista?
I didn't quite catch it.
Wait, I'll speak into the owl.
Yeah.
Are you concerned more about liability? In other words, if the university is liable for what happens there or the activities that happen there or both?
Well, I guess I was concerned about activities and what some folks might think. You know, this this is an opportunity where a lot, lot of the, you know, we have adult groups coming and, you know, we're not expecting them to go wild. But if we have a group of seventeen or eighteen-year-olds that, you know, might be connected with a couple of different groups who are at the university, but they all pile into the, want to pile into this housing.
Just push.
Maybe it's not necessary. I mean, I I don't know. I just had the sense that since we haven't really defined the the common interest, it it seems like we could punt to the university to decide whether it's a common interest, an allowable common interest.
I'm just curious on on how much this board or where, how far can we go on?
I mean, I think you can make a recommendation. I I think what Krista is saying is what we were trying to.
Yeah.
It was the goal of what we were trying to say here is that it's a the the group is serving a common interest and that that common interest is whatever the university sanctioned event is. You know, that's their their interest has to be a something sponsored by the university. Their interest can't just be, well, we're all friends and we like hanging out together, so we're going to go use a fraternity or sorority house. It has to be something directly tied to the university. And that, if, you know, it wouldn't even necessarily be five different events going on at the university and one person taking part in each of those events all go into the same, you know, fraternity house. It's it's, you know, you have a a specific event happening on campus or through the university in some capacity. You know, there's a group coming to Orono and participating in this event for, you know, whatever duration or reason. You know, they need a lodging facility, and so that group tied to that specific activity would be staying in the fraternity house. So I I think that's what we were trying to capture. I mean, if the board wants to make a a recommendation that the council just kind of look at that, take some of this feedback and make sure that that point is gotten through, I think that's, you know, fine.
That that sounds reasonable to me, Kyle. I I think, in in my opinion, your explanation that this this would be sufficient, as is. What are other thoughts, Krista? Run up the point, what other people think. Lisa?
Um. I mean, I I I kind of agree with Krista that if we add those those words after a common interest, that that would underscore that that we're concerned and we want to make sure that the activity is sanctioned by the university and they're liable for what happens. I mean, I live over there, so.
Yeah.
It's nice in the summer when there's less noise. It's not a big deal, but it's a deal, right?
Yeah, I don't I don't mind the clarification.
I I I would just assume it'd be, you know, Special Olympics, it's the dawns and stuff, so it'd be. Like that.
Right. Yeah, other comments? Ashley, what do you think?
Yeah, I was actually unsure about what this use even looked like. So I talked to my husband, who who works with a program that does this, and he said currently the way it works for his, the program that he's associated with, I think it's REU. The students can come in, they can stay there, they can eat there, but they can't like have host an event in that space right now. So if there's an REU event that they're doing, they can't host it there. But that's where they're all like staying anyways. So I think I think it seems like that's what they're we're kind of kind of trying to do is to have like those types of events for, you know, groups that are already sanctioned to be there. That's kind of how I understood it.
Do you think modification, what are your thoughts on on adding a little qualifier there?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I think I would move it up. Um. Where where were we talking? Universities-sponsored events approved by the university, right? So I would put it kind of in that clause towards the beginning. So it's like very clear and that that language, you know, is kind of lumped in together.
I think so that there's a couple things here and I'll I'll continue around to ask Dave. But again, I I'm wondering whether we can emphasize that we we are concerned here and maybe make a suggestion of location and then leave it to council to 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 figure out where it goes. But I I've heard enough chatter here. And Dave, what are your thoughts on on this as well? Mr. Thompson?
I think you could agree with Krista that putting those few words at the end will, it it doesn't do any harm and it's certainly.
No, I agree, yeah. Good call. So, I mean, I think we're all in agreement here that we can add add a qualifier where it goes. So Kyle, I'm not quite sure if we need to nail that down today, one way or another. We'd like it to be captured that it's very clear, you know, university approved.
Sure. Yeah, I think I have enough to take back to.
That cover everybody? Additional comments? I don't have any. This is one of the easier ordinance amendments, I think. We'll we'll see, but. All right. I guess hearing no no further comments. I gotta open this up to public hearing going. Hey, hey Belle, anybody on the line that wants to speak? Public hearing is open.
Nobody.
Nobody? That is so surprising. And, yeah, no interest throughout that, the whole discussion?
Nope.
All right. Well, I'm not gonna wait. Going once, twice, gone. Public hearing is closed. Can I have a motion?
Do we need to vote on this or is it just go back to council?
Do we just pass that one? I thought we need to, this is a public hearing. What do we need for a decision?
Yeah, I mean, there can be a motion that it's recommended back to council with the the recommended clarification and the language.
Be formal, yes. I have a motion, please.
Not sure how we can approach this. I.
Just, you know, I would say.
Approved the amendment to land use ordinance in regards to fraternity sorority houses as identified in the town's land use ordinance in allowable university district. With the recommendation of the wording specified that it's a university-sponsored and approved events only.
I think that works. Yeah, I think that works.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, Jessica, please.
To recommend the ordinance amendment to council, Ashley Case?
Approved.
Michael Costello?
Approved.
Lisa Buck? Phil Rock? Krista Schwenser?
Approved.
Dave Thompson?
Last but not least, I approve.
Six for approval, none opposed.
Very good. Next up is discussion before we get to the first item. Ashley, I I think we've been remiss all this time. You missed a couple meetings. I believe I heard your child in the background, but how's the baby doing?
He's great. He just turned five months old.
Yeah. We never really asked. We missed you for a little while, but.
He was. He made an appearance when, I think before you had showed up for like just a few minutes. He was kind of like wiggling around. Oh, he's coming to say hello, because.
There he is.
Hey, but and and his name?
Benjamin.
Hi Benjamin. Nice to have you on board. He could have provided a comment.
He usually does.
Well, very good. Now that now that we have that out of the way, nice nice to meet you Benjamin. Next up, our favorite time of the year, electing a planning board chairperson and vice chairperson for one year term.
Yeah, so our April meeting is is when we do this. The planning board is certainly open to discuss or make recommendations as far as who they think or who they'd like to see as chair and vice chair. Phil has been the the chair for the past year and Judd has been the vice chair. Judd's not here this evening, so it's a great opportunity to force him to do it for another year. But but really, yeah, there should be a a motion to approve a chair for the following year. And I think if if the board recommends that that Judd continue in the vice chair position, I think we could do that on a conditional basis, condition on the next planning board meeting, we have him actually agreeing to that. So with that, I mean, I'd open it up to the to the board for any comments or recommendations as far as people who would be interested or recommendations that they think should continue.
I I have a recommendation for Phil to be appointed the chair. I've been on the board for almost twenty years and I, he really does a good job in my estimation, so. I wholly recommend him and commend him for his service to the town.
Thank you, David.
And I second that.
Thank you. I I have done this for a while, but but by no means is this locked in. I do not mind doing it, but by all means, if anybody else has an interest, jump on board.
And I move assuming Judd is okay with it, if we have a vice. I'll second that. It was easy.
Okay, well, thank you for your confidence. I I do appreciate.
There should be a vote, I guess, to.
All right, can I get a a motion, please?
Can we do them both at the same time?
Yeah.
I move that we have Phil Rock be the chair of the committee and Judd McIntosh.
McIntosh.
McIntosh, sorry, be the vice chair.
I'll second. I second.
Thank you.
Lisa's got it.
Further discussion? Jessica?
For the approval of the chair and vice chair, Ashley Case?
Approved.
Michael Costello?
Approved.
Lisa Buck? Phil Rock? Should he?
I'll approve Judd.
Okay. Krista Schwenser?
Approve.
Dave Thompson?
Approved.
That's six for none opposed.
One last thing before I adjourned. What's the status of the, maybe this is a question for Belle, Zoom room? I know we've been doing this for a while and with the owl reminders, but what's the status of the the town's improvements?
So the contract has been signed, but we're just waiting on the supply chain to deliver all the equipment.
What, you have any idea on an ETA?
Not a clue.
Yeah, that's typical. I mean, every every service like that, it's just hard to come up.
I do one other.
Yes, oh, yeah. What do we have on tap?
Uh, yeah, well, two more things. So first, I'll just bring this up. The Bangor has reached out. So if you don't know Bangor and Orono have been working together in the university, I believe, on developing a a climate action plan. I think Bangor is having a few representatives speak to their planning board at their May third meeting at seven PM, and they're going to have a sort of educational conversation about the relationship between climate action planning and zoning and land use planning. So, you know, the planning board, you know, it's one of its major functions is to is to look at zoning and land use planning. And as climate planning becomes more prevalent and more of a thing focused on, it it could be a worthwhile opportunity for board members to to kind of take part in and and learn more about. So Bangor is invited, the Orono Planning Board, to take part in that meeting if they wish. So I believe you're welcome to attend in person or remotely through Zoom. And I think also, hopefully, there will be a a recording of it that I can share afterwards for anyone who can attend. But in the next week or two, I can send out more information, the Zoom link, once it's provided. So if anyone's interested in going. Yeah, and then as far as what's coming up, we have one site plan application that's come in for the May meeting. It's for a a new construction along Godfrey Drive, just south of the SRD building on that on that lot there. So just after you get past the the bend in the road. It's for a a five. Um, it's for a, a five thousand square foot building to be used as a, um, a hydroponic grow facility. Primarily for marijuana cultivation, uh, I believe. So, yeah, we'll be looking at that next month. Um, the council. You know, I, I think everyone's probably aware, Tyler Technologies purchased the, the university in lot. You know, over there and, you know, we've met with council committee a few times about working on a, a contract zone. As that property is identified in the comp plan as being ripe for, for contract zoning. Um, to allow for a continued use there. Um, so in the next couple of months, uh, that project will be coming to the planning board as well. Uh, but probably not next month, so. Those are the bigger things.
Yeah. Uh, lastly, I, I do want to be clear. I know we, we've talked about. Uh, attendance, uh, procedures, and I know Kyle, uh, laid out for us how we can do remote versus in person. And I know I've had conversations with some of you, but I, I do want to stress, or I, I would like us to be more diligent about. Uh, just making sure we know, uh, if you're going to participate in meetings and, and if so, if you're going to be remote. Uh, that is the, the town policy. Uh, I know this is a, a large volunteer commitment for, for everyone. But it is important that we know if you cannot attend, uh, that you do provide notice. Uh, respond to Kyle or, or Jessica when those emails go out. So again, we, we appreciate your time, but. Uh, I believe Kyle requested and I'm not sure if you got any of the emails, but. Uh, Krista and I had had a conversation a while back, uh, that Kyle has included that we understood that, that, uh, for. Specific reason she was going to be participating remotely for the foreseeable future, but just, I just want to be clear so we know. Uh, where you're going to be and if you cannot attend, that, that, that would be helpful if you, if you let us know. Uh, but we, we'd like to, uh, again, be, be more consistent with that if you would. That's all I have. Uh, last up is adjournment. Can I have a, a motion? Any discussion? Jessica, you're up again.
For adjournment of the April meeting, Ashley Case.
Approved.
Michael Costello.
Approved.
Lisa Buck.
Approved.
Phil Rock. Krista Schwenser.
Approve.
Dave Thompson.
Thumbs up, Dave?
Can I get a thumbs up?
I said it once.
Didn't hear you.
Six for adjournment, none opposed.
Thanks. Everybody have a good evening. We'll, we'll see you in May.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye Benjamin.